I know. When I was younger, I used to say.
All right, we should be live for this meeting of the select board at 6:30 on Tuesday, February 20th. We'll open it as per usual with a bunch of allegiance.
The flag?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right.
Dave, your yes was like, "Yes, Marlo." Were you just doing what you're supposed to do? Rich memories!
I was just trying to think what else you might want to pledge allegiance to. We can make it fun. Anyway, Dave, how about my chair, the select board?
Marlo Herrick.
Normandy Blake.
All right, and do we have any announcements?
I guess my announcement is our next meeting, which would normally be the first Monday in March, which is March 4th, I believe.
Is that a holiday?
No.
Oh, okay, just checking.
No, I know.
It's March 4th.
I wish I had thought fast enough to say, "Yes, Marlo."
You don't have that on your list?
So, that date, we'd probably have to meet downstairs because they'll have the hall set up for voting. No, I'm a week early, aren't I? Okay, yes, never mind, sorry.
Well, you're right on the theme, yeah.
I know, previously it's been the same week.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Because, because March doesn't start until Friday, we actually get the week.
Right, okay, so March 4th will be the next meeting.
So, scratch all that, people's.
Yeah, it's March 4th will be the next meeting.
Yeah.
And then, the town voting day is March 12th, Tuesday, as per usual. And then, of course, the Saturday following is our town meeting here where we will take up the rest of the warrant articles.
We are making some progress on the closed pin bridge project.
Wow.
We have another, I think we've had four property settlements now. So, we're working on that. I have, we've had the construction engineer, the construction oversight engineer, that's been approved by the state. And so, now they're getting together the dollars, which also has to go to the state to be approved. I've got the form from the other VHB, our design engineers, and they have a, they also have, that I'll be talking to you about, is an agreement for their construction side of it. They won't be overdoing the spend, but they'll be doing some things that are more construction related. So, they have an agreement for you to ponder.
Is that the oversight of the construction, basically?
Yes, but no. It's really the, working with the other engineers in the process. It's the other engineers that will be making sure that the actual construction is happening as it's planned.
Okay.
But VHB is still the one in charge?
VHB is still the, our main engineers.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that was, that was a process that I had to learn how to do, which is not difficult, but it's just certain ways you have to zig instead of zag.
Right, or travel down the road.
Yeah, so.
Some pipe of light.
So, I guess my, my point is, I'm just trying to say, things are happening.
Good.
Ever so slowly.
Did we have any other announcements?
I don't.
Any from the board? All right, so that would move us on to our first appointment, who is unable to attend tonight. So, that would move us on to our old business, which starts with the stipend policy.
So, we had talked about this policy before, and you had asked me to change it. I had an additional, I had something with the CPI in there. So, I have changed it using the wording that the board gave me, at two and a half percent, where the cost of living adjustment set by social security.
Is that something that the board would like to discuss further, or to sign this evening?
I'd say sign, because I think we have discussed it.
I was gonna say, because we've already discussed it.
I think we're pretty good.
Yeah.
All right.
Ask that along, if you would.
And hopefully, this makes it far easier for future boards to deal with budgeting requests. Because it should just make sense. All right. And that will move us on to copier replacement. Thank you.
Dana, I find these bits very interesting.
So, yes, we have the...
I know which one I want.
Copier? I'm sure I know. So, I sent you a memo as far as what the results were. We had four vendors who had given me quotes on copiers. One, I believe, Marlo, you had given me, New England Copy Service.
New London, yeah.
And, in New London. And Budget Technology and Manchester, they've been stopping to see me quite often, as well as PIF. Right now, we have Konica Minolta, the machine, similar to what Twin Rivers has bid us on, and also Budget Technology. The difference between Budget Technology and Twin Rivers pricing on the Minolta is the fax module. Budget Technology says, "We don't need to have a fax module, we can do it online." And I'm sure there is a way to do that, that we could learn how to do. Whereas, if Twin Rivers were to remove the fax, we'd be probably back in the vicinity of another $500 less. The, the brands that they have given us, New London Copy Service bid on Sharps. I don't know, PIF, a Rico, I don't really know much about a Rico. I guess I will say, the Konica Minolta has been a real workhorse for the town. And it's still working, unfortunately, this, they're not making parts for it anymore, so.
Oh, geez.
If we had a problem, unless we could find one in some old machine. But that has been a very satisfactory machine. The Sharp and the Rico, I guess as far as what I know, they're somewhat comparable. I did have someone tell me that the Sharp wasn't as good.
As the Rico?
And I didn't really have anyone comment about a Rico, except for the salesman telling me it was great. So, you see, he's given us a couple prices on the Rico. C25 means it's 25 copies a minute, which I think is sufficient. The C35, obviously, is 35 copies a minute.
How about the Konica Minolta?
The Konica is 36. Budget Technology also gave you a price on the, on a 45 copy per minute. And, and the Sharp is 31.
So, the need for quite this expensive of a printer. Now, we used to, and I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't know any of this, but we're doing a lot of, did we used to use that copier to do our binding and our, and all that kind of stuff? That, that when we used to do the town reports?
That they used to print town reports.
Okay, which we don't need to do anymore.
We don't, we don't.
Because we're putting that out.
Right.
To bid, which seems to be working nice, and I think it's putting our labor force to better use than you guys.
I, I think that the, printing the copier in-house, I mean, printing the town report in-house, it was very expensive for what you were paying me to do it.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I'm not saying, and frankly, it isn't the type of work I enjoy, but if you told me to do it, I would. But I think there's better uses for it.
And with these quotes, is there a maintenance fee that goes, is in this number, or?
It is not in this number.
And, and with that being said, I, I know that, little bit of experience, I haven't really dealt with a lot of copiers, because we've had ours forever, then we did upgrade, which, nothing close to this number. But anyhow, probably just want to take the seven off, and then eight, forty-nine sounds right. But with that being said, that's with a per, you know, like, I'm not sure that I totally knew that it was a, there was a little maintenance fee to that, of every copy, certain amount of copies, you get a, a charge. Which, the one we had before, they, it was a $495 fee. They came out every year, they updated, did whatever they needed to do, they were there whenever you needed them, and that was it.
Are you meaning from the company doing it?
Yeah, 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 it was like a $500, $495, $500 charge.
All these for maintenance would run you about $1,500 for the year. You are correct that they give you, they allow you so many copies, and if you go over that, you're charged X amount, well, you pay for all the copies anyway, whether it's in the maintenance fee or whether it's, you know, over and above, but.
Did they all offer you a maintenance fee?
Oh, yes.
Okay, and, and it was about $1,500 bucks?
About $1,500.
But that's not in this number?
It is not in this number. Yeah.
Did any of them give you cost per copy calculations?
That's really what I was kinda saying too.
Yeah, and I think they're all somewhat similar, depending the color copies. Some of them were like 30 cents, color copy, whereas the black and white is more 5 cents.
You mean the print is colored, or you mean the paper is colored?
The print is colored.
The print is colored, yeah. Because I don't do that, and I, I have Twin Rivers, they've been great for me, but.
Well, we have had, that's been our, our vendor. Their service has been fabulous, and I know they've done it with the town. Now, do I have any reason to think that anyone else would not be as good? No, I don't. You know, I think that, I would, they, they gave me a few, I was going to see what the board thought, direction they wanted to go in, because I do have a few references that I was going to follow through and see how they, see how that would go.
So, my knowledge is, I, I am dealing with New London copy, and so far, so good.
Who owns that?
Phil somebody.
Yeah, some gentleman, I can tell you kind of what it looks like.
I used to do business a long time ago with him, I'm sure he must be retired.
Philip Grant.
But they're not, they're, you know.
Oh, Phil Grant?
Philip Grant.
That is, the same one.
Is he?
Yeah.
I mean, he just, he shows up, does his thing, and.
Yeah.
You know, so, but there again, I only had Integrated Office Solutions before, and they were, they were fabulous, and then they went out of business, but so fabulous, they.
From Concorde?
No, they were out of Manchester.
Oh.
Yeah, and they were, they were, I thought, I mean, they, there wasn't anything, they didn't, just you called, they haul.
You know, it's funny, because I have my copiers at home, and I print everything, I don't get charged per print of copies.
Yeah, well, that's the first time, I, I had that one maintenance fee, I never got charged per copy either, till this situation.
So, and I mean, I've been doing 39 years, so.
Right, right.
And I don't think we've got that in our current stuff with Twin Rivers.
Well, we have, I mean, we have the, every year, we have to read the meter, or every quarter, we have to read the meter, and if we're over, they would put it in a deal to us.
I wonder if that's because it's a town, it's a, I mean, I'm a business too, but they never do that to me.
I, I don't know how yours is, and how they, how they consider it, but most businesses, I would believe that they would, it would be similar.
Oh.
You know.
So, Dana, on these quotes, is there any, do you have any misgivings on any of them? Or any other more like, you know, input on, I mean, like I said, um.
You know, I guess I look at it, I don't see that at the end of the day, there's an awful lot of difference between these.
Yeah. At least, it makes me wonder why Twin Rivers is so much higher.
You know, um.
Did you tell them they were a lot higher?
I did.
Yeah, and then you said, "Okay."
Yeah, and she said, "Well, that's because of your fax."
You do what?
But the.
Your fax, the fax machine.
Oh, oh, and none of these have that in it?
But do you ever use a fax machine, really?
Well, no, the, the really, the only, very rarely, every now and then, we have the fax.
It's not worth it.
It could be really through the internet now, this fax, internet faxing. That's what, and I'm, I can't tell you how it works, but that's how they explained it to me. The clerk with her dog rabies things, often gets things faxed to her. And I think part of that is because of this HIPAA issue, that you can't be emailed. Now, go figure, because the fax comes to me, and I shouldn't be looking at, you know, this, but anyway, you know, if I don't, I close my eyes.
Oh, yeah, right.
It's about some mishap.
Well, you're on the town, you really should know what's going on.
But, but you know, it's, it's just the way it is, and I'm sure there's some state agencies also that use faxing, you know, not the ones that I deal with, but. I, I guess that, I guess I would, I don't want to do, would we use every one of these speeches all the time? Probably not. However, I assume we're going to have this machine for quite some time. And I think for the dollar amount difference, why would you go less?
No, are we having troubles with our machine now, or no?
No, no, but we've, it's toward the end of its usefulness.
Yeah.
It is having trouble getting parts.
Yeah.
And I mean, I'm telling you.
That's a big thing, I'm having trouble getting parts.
I waited too long and tortured my assistant.
Well, that's, I mean.
Because that's what you end up doing, you end up fighting it.
You know, the scanner, the scanner feature, you have to, you have to treat it, treat it well. And I don't mean to say this, but I'm really one of the ones, only ones that come running, right in the line. Because I'm used to quirk and things.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I mean, you, you look forward to something being a little easier.
You know, just.
Well. So, do we?
Are we looking for a direction for a actual purchase, or a budgeting and making sure we've got funds available in case? Or like, what are we actually looking for?
Well, I think what I'm looking for, tomorrow, that copier could quit. And if we can't get it fixed, then it would be a crisis. And I'm looking for us to solve the crisis before it becomes a crisis. I think that we do have funds available in the office, town office machine, capital reserve. We have planned on this for, since I've been here, we've known that the copier is, is going along. And so, I'd like to be in a position that we could figure out what we're going to do. I'm assuming you want to purchase the copier, not lease a copier?
I'd have to see pricing, but most likely, it's going to be highly beneficial to purchase instead of lease.
I think all of these could be purchased.
Unless the leases include the service of the machines, so that there's no additional fee.
Cost.
And so, then you're like, okay, we've gone through this, we've spent similar to what we would in a five or six-year period in four or five years, but now we're, like, we guarantee that that's everything, and then we get a new one at the same sort of lease price. If it's that beneficial, leasing might make sense. Otherwise, it's probably definitely going to make sense to purchase.
Yeah, leasing does not include maintenance.
In, in just a quick couple searches while we've been talking, most things are saying that if you want something reliable, you probably want to go with the Konica Minolta and not the Rico. Some of the Rico models seem to be good, and some of them not so good. Though, of course, the models that we are quoted are listed in the papers.
Well, I mean, the Mar, I guess with the Rico, and again, I don't know anything about Rico, but there's a saying that you get what you pay for.
And I will say that Sharp is a decent name as a name, but they're not really well-known in the copier space. The, I'm really surprised not to see Canon, HP, or Xerox included in any of these quotes. I would have expected reasonable, reasonably similar cost quotes from all of those, and those are all reputable name brands as well.
Well, I could search out who carries those lines. You know, I just, I, I felt I had four quotes, local, local businesses that offered up, and I'm sure Twin Rivers knew what we had, they're very familiar with our machines, so they quoted us a very similar machine budget document they did. PIF doesn't run the Konica, so they gave me this Rico price.
Does Twin River, will they give you money back on our old machines? Will they take them back?
No, I, there's really no trade-in value.
There isn't?
No. And I'm not sure what we would do with it, I don't know who would need, I mean, I'd like to see if we use someplace.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe school or something.
I, I think my only thing is, yes, you use it a lot, but it's not like we're a 20-employee town that you might say, "Ah, let's spend a little bit more money, because it's getting hammered harder." So, I.
I don't disagree with you, Marlo, I don't disagree with you on that, but I, you know, I don't think the difference is really, at the end of the day, could be, I think it's insignificant myself. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I, I think from a purely just cost standpoint, like, the difference in upfront cost of the Rico C2510 versus any of the others is hard to ignore. That said, every single other option there far outclasses the C2510, based on their page counts and stuff. And perhaps, if we asked Twin Rivers or Budget Document Technology, who both have the Konica Minolta quotes, they may have, and I don't know if the model exists, but we've got quotes for BizHub C360I, maybe there's a 250I or something similar. That's the next step down, and before I would try to make an actual choice, I'd like to try to get more apples-to-apples comparisons. The same thing with the Sharp. And I'd also like to see if you can find someone that does the, the other brands. If we had to make a choice today, just for the sake of continuity, and knowing that a majority of the interface and options will work the same way that you expect them to, instead of having to wait for figuring stuff out, or reset up, or retraining on various options, I would probably go towards the least expensive option presented for the Konica Minolta. This is just me personally talking. But it would be, that would be the, we need it right now. The thing I would say is that all printers, but, I'm sorry, all, all of the copiers will handle things like scan or copy to PDF very differently from each other. And so, you should try to find a way with their sales folks to go through a demonstration of that process, or watch a video of that process.
Okay.
To see that it would actually make sense to use here.
Because the scanning is very important with that record re-cantum.
Absolutely.
Correct, yeah.
Well, at least in general.
And, and some of them will have different formats they support than others as well. So, that's all really important to look at before we actually make a choice, unless it's an emergency choice.
No, and I'm not giving you because it's an emergency, this is why I'm, I'm starting now, so I appreciate this input.
And, and I ultimately kind of go towards the people I know, but that isn't too far out of the price range, but it's a different kind, just, just in what we've had to deal with, you know, if I call, then we spread out there, so.
Yeah.
You just never know, but, and the budget could be the same way, I, I just don't know.
Well, I've done business with New London and Twin Rivers, so Twin Rivers is what I'm doing right now, and they've been good. I cannot complain, either one of them is great for me.
So, let me get you more information on the maintenance agreement.
Yes, and if it's anything per copy, what it is.
The cost per copy, be with me while I write this down.
And you probably have, but have you talked with your compatriots in the surrounding towns to see who they might use?
I try never to talk to them. No, not really, I haven't really, so that's a good idea, yeah.
I know New London does quite a few towns, it's, well, that's why you told me.
Yeah, well, I believe you, I believe you. I think that that's a good idea to talk with other towns and what they do, maybe the school system as well. I think actually Budget Technology told me he does the school, but I could have that mixed up. Cost per copy, maintenance agreement, you wanted me to check out about the Xerox, and what was the other one, HP?
Xerox, Canon, and HP are not listed, and you usually would see.
Canon, okay, all right.
That's kind of weird. Maybe they're getting snotty.
Well, HP is usually the, we will be maintainable for a very long time, but you're going to pay for it. Don't try to do anything we didn't approve, or we're going to break it.
See, you know better than anybody.
They, they've had a bunch of entertainment with their printers lately, for, you put in a cartridge that's not theirs, and they brick it for security reasons, so your printer never works again.
It's kind of like a little bit in the big equipment world where, where they become, they can almost, near impossible for you to work on yourself. You know, it's just from a copier, from a copier state, you know?
Yep, exactly the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't I bring this back to you at your Mark Fit meeting?
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, here.
Here, right here.
Before we dive into new business, from the last meeting, what's the status of the research for what is required legal, et cetera, for cutting trees over in Manchester Drive? Because I know we were waiting for you to talk to legal or some other folks and do some research, and then get back to us.
I have to tell you, I haven't done that.
Okay.
So, let me put that on my list.
Okay.
We're talking about that law that the man.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just moving forward.
Yeah, what we should do, and in what direction.
Legality of cutting trees.
Yeah, and in old business, we do have the warrant articles. We all gave Dana what we thought individually, but we should approve the warrant article officially for town meeting purposes and voting purposes. So, has, am I correct in assuming that nothing has changed since the last time you sent it out with the removed warrant article?
I have not changed anything since you all approved what it was.
Okay.
And, and that warrant article, and I know I have it with me somewhere.
And did we end up, we, all of, all of the recommendations?
You did.
Okay.
You did, and unless you tell me differently. You, the only one that you didn't, you don't make a comment on is the ones that are non-monetary.
Right, the last two.
You know, yeah, basically. But no, the, the warrant is the same.
So, I would move that we accept the last presented warrant article as our official warrant articles to move forward.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Along those lines, we don't necessarily have to decide tonight, but I'd like you each to decide and think about which warrant articles you would want to speak about on when we go into town meeting. I know I did a lot of the speaking at our budget hearing, but.
So, I just leave it up to you.
You like to speak.
Hey, gee, do you second that? Oh, yeah, I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Shoot, you're outloaded.
Wives of two women, one excited, and the other outnumbered, boy.
I am outnumbered, okay.
Moving on, he says.
I think that handles the old business that I wanted to cover there.
Will you do that, Mark Fit, decide which article, who's speaking to?
Exactly.
That sounds good.
I don't like to rush things.
Yeah.
I mean, unless you know what you want to speak about now, that's fine.
I'll have to look again.
But.
You probably know them all, I know.
I mean, so, it's going to be.
I want to know more with the loose words.
We're going to have the budget, we're going to have the two different funds. We're gonna have the budget, we're gonna have the two different funds, we're gonna have the various removal of funds, we're gonna have the contingency, which is usually Dana.
Fascinating. I try to make it exciting.
I think that's all the ones that we have. I feel like I'm missing one. Oh, the Pillsbury Lake.
The dam.
One which you usually speak on.
Yeah.
The dam bond, as Mike likes to say.
You said the increase proposal for the veterans exemption.
Oh, yes. And then the police one which...
The chief will talk about.
Speak about. I think that's all the town ones.
And the fire department, which the fire chief will speak about.
Well, there isn't a warrant article about the fire department, is there?
No.
No, he'll just have to explain it.
That's just in the budget, if somebody wants to know more about the budget. So I think that's, those are basically the ones. And then we'll have petitioners that should speak about their own stuff.
Right, we don't have to speak about the ones that are not...
Correct.
Dave, this might be a good time to talk about the budget, which is now in the form that the DRA likes it. It's the same budget that you have approved, but I need signatures to send it to the DRA. So if I could just send you
Okay.
that page. There's a place for a printed name and a place for a signature. If you'd like, I can print your names.
Yeah.
If you leave me a place. And then, after that, I think you're telling me it is all right to post the warrant and the budget.
What are you writing, Paul?
I want a position. I'll let him type or print my name, because they won't be able to read it any better than my signature.
You're correct.
But you will need to fill yours in, too.
Yeah.
Nope. Do we have other old business?
I don't know.
I brought something with me that kind of fell in my lap while I was looking at other things. And I don't, I don't want to go over this now, but I do want to bring it to our attention that last year around this time, we went over the master plan recommended bullet list that we had from 2018 of what things should be done and how they were doing. And I think it behooves us to go through it again and see where we ended up and what we need to try to prioritize going forward into the next year. If our next meeting is not stacked, we can add it to that and we can send this back out to everybody, because I don't think I have a digital copy of it.
Okay, that's the 2018 master plan?
Master plan recommendation bullet list. I think Russ made it.
Okay, I think he probably did.
All right, so that would just be that comment there.
All right.
Unless everyone's bored tonight and wants to go through it. And anybody else have any other old business? Okay, so that moves us to new business, the BHB agreement and construction support services.
So this is the agreement for the construction. I did send you this and you pack it.
And I read it thoroughly and thought, ah, okay.
What's really funny about this is part of the state, sort of the way you do with this federal project, they send me a sheet, and I'm supposed to determine how many hours they should spend on these things. And so I have this very nice little Excel sheet, and I put the hours in and it calculates it so that we can compare. Now, this may come as a huge shock to you, but I have not ever done this before, and I haven't built personally many bridges.
Gee, who is, I mean, honest?
And so I said to Greg, well, you should build a bridge and get over it. Greg, you know, I have a sense of humor, but this doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
You know, but anyway, I thought that was quite amusing. I read the, I didn't see anything in here that looked totally out of place. And again, this is an agreement that will have to be approved by the state.
I will tell you, I think the project managing twelve thousand is way over.
Oh, this is the same thing we have in here.
I will say, I think I should be in a different business.
Oh, God, yes. How do you even, how do you even?
I tried to keep it secret.
Do we all sign it?
I don't know.
Just have one.
Well, let's be just one, yeah.
If Dave would do that.
I guess.
Oh, I love the, you know, shop drawing reviews.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna review your drawings.
Yeah. You're the big guy, it's only one person that's to sign. Ah ha, unless you want to...
Town of Webster, New Hampshire agrees with the SCOB services agreement. Haven't we in the past just made Dana the point person for doing all of this?
That's fine, I don't care, whatever you want to do.
Because he's the one that'll be here longer than us in theory.
Well, we hope so, we never know.
Don't make any mistakes.
Do we need a vote to make you do that, or just you should do it?
Why don't you do it, go and make a motion, and then that way, if we didn't need it, we still have it.
Because he'd be here all the time if...
I think we've done it before, but I'll try to word it this way so that hopefully we don't need to again. I would move that we appoint Town Administrator Dana Hadley as the signatory for the town in matters handling closed pen bridge going forward.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Of course, if it's required to be aboard or something, obviously we'll do that, but that way we can just approve it in the future.
Thank you.
Plus, maybe that's a good idea, because I own some of that property that they're gonna be fooling around with, so.
Well, that'll be a separate, in theory, that's a separate thing with you and them.
Oh, like, fooling around with.
Yeah.
You're what?
They're gonna fool around with that property.
Yeah, when they fool around with my property, they'll fool around with my property.
That's right.
You said there were about four or so that they've done? Roughly, how many are there?
I think there's a total of, I know of, I know of two more. Okay, yeah. I know of two more.
All right.
No, you're done.
Oh, I'm done with that five hundred bucks?
And I was, I was trying to follow your question.
That's it.
Hey, 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 Dee, you're done?
Yeah.
Fooling around with your land, okay?
Hope you don't mind, but we're gonna put like a seven-eleven there.
Is there any kind of a special link?
I guess...
Maybe we'll put just a seven, yeah.
Maybe it'll always are slushies.
Oh, wouldn't your kids like that, huh?
One thing I'd like is to have that piping down, so if the road is, there's no big three-foot ditch, you can lose your car.
Yeah, they said they were gonna do that.
Yeah, they did say, yep.
I think they planned that.
Yeah, so that's great.
So hopefully they actually do.
Right. Well, I'll be hanging out there, so will you.
You can go tell them, yeah.
Well, I'm sure we'll be down there for people to watch the construction.
Yes. Oh, yeah, everybody, no.
All right, do we have any other new business?
I do not.
All right, that moves us onto correspondence.
So the correspondence, again, I sent you that. Here's the letter I was talking about, we got approved to go ahead with the second step for the right peers.
No waste of paper.
Yeah, the next, the next item is the State Fire Marshal's Office wants to make a list of municipalities where use, display, possession are permissible, consumer fireworks is restricted or prohibited. So in other words, you, you as the town have the right, you can prohibit or restrict fireworks.
We haven't done that in the past, I don't believe.
So I don't have an actual link to that to check. If you can make sure that we're not on there as restricted, that would be good. Because as far as I know, we're not restricted in any way.
No, I don't think so either.
This is just, I guess this is something they have to do as far as the law goes.
That's scary.
So as long as it's accurate, we're good with it.
Okay. I don't think there's any action we take, no further.
Unless we disagree with what they said, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Next, we have a few decisions from the ZBA that Russ has presented the paperwork on. Actually, I guess we get free. There was a letter that came from a citizen regarding community power.
Yes, which I forgot about, but I do want to make a comment on.
Well, because this is a good time to point out that
Yep.
this wasn't, this wasn't really a necessary... Well, well-received but not necessary.
Yes and no at this point. So, so the first thing that I'll point out is this is a person that has a net metered account.
Right.
And they appropriately understood that they are not going to be included in community power at this time. They showed concern about the automatic inclusion possible in the future, and that was because of their basically not using power. So they were basically saying they don't care about the price. But more importantly, that they didn't want to lose their grandfather credits that they have because they're on the old net metering style or net metering one point O. And so they were requesting that they opt out now for all future iterations of community power. So the two things to say are, one, since they're not being opted in, there's not an opt-out for them at this time. So this will not apply when net metering customers can be served. At that time, then another mailer or similar would go out to those customers saying this would be the opt-in time, or the opt-out time, or when you would be automatically enrolled, and that is the time that they would be able to opt out. The second part of that is that being on original net metering, net meter, what's called net metering two point O, which is what's active right now, or even net metering three point O, which is probably coming soon once they figure out the PUC dockets later in the summer, which are currently in progress, any of those that you get on are, at least as of now, all grandfathered and required to be maintained no matter who you use for supply. So even if you switch, none of that should get touched. It should remain in full force and effect even when you switch over. That's one of the reasons, among many, that Community Power is not taking those customers at this time, because the utilities have not yet figured out how to provide that data correctly. So at that point in time, this should not be an issue, or the things that they believe are going to be an issue should not be. And we'll certainly have more detail when that happens. And unfortunately, even though they are expressing their intent to opt out, there is nothing for them to opt out of at this point, since they are not opted in. So just for clarification's sake, that's why I wanted to talk about it. And I will leave it at that.
Dave, may I ask you a question about Community Power?
Yes, please.
Fred Raven was in today.
Yes.
And the school has a deal for electricity. Now, are, they're not automatically opted in because it's not a resident?
They are not, they are not residential on default power. The school, as of now, or as of the last time I checked, does electricity the same way they do propane and oil, which is they bid on it for a, basically a year period with everybody who wants to provide it, and they choose the lowest bidder. Community Power at this point is not set up to take part in that bidding process. Probably will be for next year's budget for the school to be able to be considered in that. But is not currently, and they would not be automatically allowed.
Okay, so it's true then that they do not need to take any action?
Unless they are on default service, which to my knowledge, they're not.
I don't believe they are, yeah.
Unless they're on default service, there would be nothing for them to act on.
Okay, all right, so I just wanted to make sure that I told Fred correctly.
Yep. It would not hurt to call up and provide the particular meter information to Community Power for the various locations, specifically because utilities have given us incorrect data in the past, but you should not be having issues with that. If you notice that something changed, you should immediately contact us so that we can, so that Community Power can work with them and the utility to immediately get them switched back and figure out how to fix the fees.
Okay. All right.
Unfortunately, there have been a couple places that were switched that shouldn't have in the past. I think all but one of them, it has been based on bad utility data, and so the utilities have actually paid back the difference that the place lost in savings.
Fix it, yeah.
Not guaranteeing that would happen going forward, but...
Right. Maybe this is also a good moment to bring up the boilers, the furnace?
Did we have any other correspondence, or?
No, that was it.
Okay. So that would normally move us to public comment and/or other items. As we have no public, I will start for Dana in that town hall has had heating issues again. As you remember, last year, there was a point in time where the town hall had no heat for many times. And that was fixed through a number of cleanings and other similar things downstairs. And one of the units was typically the worst one. That has happened again and is most likely going to happen again fairly soon. So we should be expecting that and looking at a replacement setup. Huckleberry has been given great service and coming in to try and take care of it and get it going. Absolutely no issues as far as I know with dealing with them.
Oh, no, they've been fabulous.
And so they've been awesome. They will come back with some more solid numbers unless they already have?
They have not, but yeah.
They will come back with some more solid numbers, but the spitball figure was probably somewhere between fourteen and seventeen thousand for a replacement of similar in-kind setup.
Well, they have a spot here.
They would not recommend, they would not recommend doing an in-kind replacement, but then further doing more work to adjust the ducting, what directions that goes, splitting the system, because part of the problem is that they're a twin system, so if they don't perfectly work with each other, they set each other off.
Oh, Jesus.
And so, and the company supposedly was saying, hey, go through this checklist and then we'll, you know, deal with stuff under warranty. They did all of that last year, and they got crickets. And then when they called the company back, oh, you're over ten years this year. So, yeah, we're not doing anything for you. So, yay. That being said, they said they could also come back and work out figures for heat pumps as well for additional consideration, if that's the direction the town wanted to go. We've also, today, when that happened, we called several different companies. Lift Free Heating and Cooling and Electric actually came out today to look at it and had a couple different recommendations and said they were gonna send Dana some estimates before the meeting. Have they done that?
They have done that.
Okay.
And so, and this just came, so I haven't really read it, but one of the suggestions they had was a combination heat pump, boiler type of furnace type of thing. And they sent me two quotes on two. And of course, it's broken down to doing things like installing the furnace and as well as some heat pumps, updating thermostat wires. They suggested we utilize our current duct work. So I have, I have a couple of quotes here, and they're both in the fifty thousand dollar range.
Okay, so to...
Oh, what was that number at the top there?
His number?
I'm kidding.
So it'd be the like seventeen plus duct work sort of stuff? So whatever they're saying for duct work is probably what can roughly be added there? And that's a spitball figure, not an actual estimate or club.
And Friday, I do have someone else coming. And Friday, I do have someone else coming.
Yeah, so revision should be showing up on Friday. I expect them to probably be similar with one of the sides of what Liffrey is giving us, and I believe there was a third company that Wendy had.
Wendy suggested, I haven't called them yet.
Okay.
So we have money in a contingency fund for this?
We don't have a contingency fund because we haven't had town meeting.
Oh. But I mean, we're planning on it, I would.
There is, we are expecting there will be a contingency fund.
Okay.
And the hope slash expectation is that after the cleaning and fix that Huckleberry has put in, that in theory, it will survive through the rest of the heating season of, you know, a month and a half. But we're gonna have to probably do something, probably this year.
Would you say it's ten years old, that the system is ten years old?
Over ten years old.
Over, oh, yeah.
And this, to be clear, this is the double, the double propane, or, it is propane.
It is propane, yeah.
So it's the double propane furnaces that run the office and library side of the building, not the oil that runs this side of the building. The. I think it's actually two, if they could go all together.
Yeah, there's another one, the last couple of pages. I'm sorry I didn't present it much better, but I just got it.
Well, you're gonna get some more anyway, right?
All right.
Yeah.
So I think we're actually reading this not right. We should double check with them because the the two-stage system, which I guess I should say the two, basically the three ways we can look at fixing this are, we basically replace in-kind and split things, which somebody like Huckleberry will provide us a quote or something to do, no problem. And that's some ductwork to make sure that like the library would be one system, the offices and stuff would be the other, and we'd probably just stop serving the stage from it, since we get everything from the oil anyway. The, so that's the first option. The second option is a twin-style system, but instead of two running in parallel like it is now, you can't get a, according to Huckleberry, you can't get a propane system that puts out the BTUs that the previous, previous system was oil used to be able to do. And so that's why you had two systems that worked at the same time. Different in the twin-style system here, which they call a two-stage system, is that it uses one really large, high-efficiency propane system, but only when it's really cold. When it's not super cold, it has another main unit sitting on it that runs as a heat pump. So then it's only using electricity and doing it as efficient as possible. And so that's the, that's the kind of second option, which is the using them both together. The third option is to basically replace everything with either one massive heat pump and several heads on it to put into different places, and then some backup electric heat, or to have smaller, smaller heat pump options in like each of the office-type areas, which is probably what I would expect to get from revision. Liffrey has given us somewhat of that on the end here, in that they've got a zoned system, and the, and a main system for the library. So this quote that totals to the fifty-seven thousand something is actually both options at once.
Oh, really?
At least that's my reading of it. And maybe I'm wrong, I hope I'm not, but it looks like they would be expecting that basically the first two pages we would go through.
You got a backside on them, too.
Oh, okay. That helps. Okay. That makes more sense than, so never mind that. Yeah, so the, the second slightly higher quote is purely heat pumps, which is the fifty-seven, maybe I shouldn't read these numbers.
Okay.
Just because we've got other people.
Right.
So I won't, I won't read out the actual numbers, I'll just do this for the board.
Okay, yep.
So that number is the total for just heat pumping, and then that number.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Is the total for the joint system. When they were here, we mentioned the individuals, and they, like the individual systems, because that would give us a lot of freedom for when and how and who, and offices open and not, and when we bother to heat them and not. And gives various temperature control for different places, instead of the top end of the hallway just gets more heat, sort of thing. The, but discussion with them, and that we had ducting already, and they were highly sold on that the better option would be to do the joint system, because then we reuse all of the ducting, we get places that wouldn't directly have heat, such as the bathrooms, when, without having to, you know, install an extra heat pump for them. And so you get that. We would also get the reuse of our existing propane setup, and being able to always stay in the highest efficiency, both of the heat pump and/or when it gets too cold, instead of having to back up the heat pump, we're not quite getting the cold we want, that's sorry, the heat we want, et cetera, then you can back it up with the fuel. Should drastically reduce both electricity and fuel versus a either or the other.
That's a whole lot there, that's funny.
I'm glad he's here to explain it to me.
Those are basically the three options. We'll see what we get from, from other places. I would expect them to fall into one or two of the other options. I would expect that if we requested it, I would expect that what we would get from Huckleberry for a heat pump option, if they've provided us that, and/or from revision, are probably going to be the individual setups. They may surprise me on that, but that's what I would expect from them. I would actually expect that to be an option from just about every company that does heat pumps. The, I was pleasantly surprised that the, the joint option of both fuel and heat pump was actually provided, because not a lot of places have done that. And they have indicated that they do a lot of both sides and both styles, in that, for example, Mitsubishi is one of the prime heat pump manufacturers, and they are the diamond level, so you get the full extent of warranty and everything else, which you'll often get places that haven't done as many installs of them going for cheaper, you actually don't get the full warranty with Mitsubishi unless they're that diamond level installer, which I know that like revision and stuff is as well. So I look forward to seeing what else we get, but that's a good discussion going forward at this point. Hopefully, we can find things out and make a decision what to do before it quits on us again, and hopefully it lasts into the summer, so there's not a period of no heat while it's happening, but.
It will probably come at the same time the copier comes out.
On the day of town meeting.
Yeah.
But yes.
They'll be in the fodder heat, so.
So I'll put that on for March fifth, and we'll come back.
Yeah, hopefully we'll have.
Hopefully you should have everything, and then again, I, I need to think about this. I hadn't had you really read it very well.
All right. Is there further business beyond signing the minutes?
The approval of the minutes?
Yep.
That's, yep. And then I have things to be signed.
Okay, so just minutes and signing.
Yeah.
He's not here, but I did send a couple things to Ross for the minutes. Before I jump in, did either of you have comments or thoughts on the minutes?
Yep, I didn't. So what did you find there?
So for the budget hearing, page one, line forty-five, it was gone by about two thousand. Should have added the following, that that was after the revaluation, because otherwise the discussion doesn't really make a lot of sense. Page three, line twenty-six, board discussion it should be after discussion and public hearings in each town, and then the next sentence could be removed because it re-says that. Page three, line twenty-seven is me, I don't remember whether it was he felt this, or yet, or something, but it should say he felt this petition warrant article, because they talked about a couple different things in the sentence before. Page three, line forty-three was a blank line, and in there, I believe it should be stated, much like it was for the previous warrant article, that the petitioner was not, Mike asked, and the petitioner was not present to speak on behalf of the article.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And those are my ones for that. For the select board minutes, I had two.
Typebooks?
For the select board minutes. One was year instead of year, and Dustin instead of Dustin.
So where are they?
And I did send those to Ross, saying that I would, suggesting those edits. I didn't CC you of it, because I figured he'd be here and handling minutes.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll ask if we have any questions.
Anything further on the minutes?
No.
All right. So I would move that we approve the minutes as amended.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now let's sign our documents away.
Sign away.
Sometimes this chair is more uncomfortable than others. Tonight, I feel like.
Oh, you got the fishy chair, just like.
I know, it's not, I know, it's like, short.
I've got one, too.
Normally, we keep them up here, but Russ probably gave them first, he usually does.
Yeah, we need those. Next thing, we'll have nice arm pairs.
I'd like more of an adjustable one.
Yeah, there you go.
Now, if we save five hundred dollars on the copier, we get an adjustable chair. I'm looking. I'm gonna be locked out here, sure.
I'll give you this, because I know you're gonna look through them all in detail. I have generally produced them. These are the cut-up bills, or I should say the bills that are on the cut-up cards. So they've already gone through.
That's interesting, corrected bill. That's interesting.
Oh, you need to tell us always correct.
Or do it.
Overall. It's a lead.
That's why I didn't pay that one last month either, because they couldn't tell me how much it was.
They didn't tell you how much it was? Oh, that was good.
So it's kinda hard to pay.
That'd be a great way to do it. Eh, just to get money, hopefully.
Wait, so there. So all of these have amounts due, and they're different. Even the solar rays are different. Where is the credit, where are the credits that they're supposed to be providing us?
You'll see them at the top of the bill, however, the date that I pay the bills is not, does not jive with the date the bill is cut. I balanced them out, they should be, I hope, in there, my Excel spreadsheet where I analyze them.
I like our three-page letter, that was very nice.
Can I look at the other?
Here?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry, Dave. I'm trying to look at this building, women are passing this stuff between me.
We need like some sort of, you know, that you used to have in the stores when they send the money upstairs, remember the stores?
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right.
Those pneumatic tube things?
Yeah, that's right, or like the bank does when they send it out to the other stuff.
I forget which store it was, but I used to shop with my mother and.
That's right. It would go up, yep. Yep, I remember that, too. That was a long time ago.
I know, I was very young.
Hate to say it, we showed her, eh? Now I hate to shop. Nothing could be fun.
That has got to be the most backwards way I've ever seen them try to build this.
I just seem to get away with a lot of interesting stuff. How long does it take you to get home?
About thirty-five minutes.
Thirty-five, that's not bad.
Not bad.
On a good traveling day.
Yeah. And unfortunate that there's no traffic on the road that goes along, so.
No, that's, okay. Makes a big difference, all those people. I just wonder where they get their licenses anymore.
Yeah.
Conver is crazy.
Yeah, that is bizarre, but, okay.
Dave, I'm not reviewing these, 'cause. I leave that to you.
I hate to say, don't try to make sense of it, but it's very confusing.
Yes, they are.
Just think, by the time we get rid of that close friend group, you're gonna be an expert.
No.
Man, you have to come down with a chair and sit there and tell them what they're supposed to do.
I, I'm gonna go down, I'm gonna tell them.
That's right.
Do this, do that.
Can you explain to me the top number of this check? Because it's to Atlantic Recycling Equipment, but is description Hopkinton, New Hampshire town of for a job member?
Yes, I can. Um, that is our portion of a, and it should be in that file that, that Marlowe has. It's our portion for a, uh, the.
Trailer?
The masher.
Compactor.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
My, I'm impressed with myself, I figured out a way.
Was that in CIP?
Yes.
I think, but yes, well.
I thought it was just the two compacting trailers.
But is this the ca, is this the masher?
It's the same thing.
Yeah, in the trailer.
Is this the amount they provided to us for the CIP?
The, um, the total amount of a hundred eighty-something thousand.
Right.
No, is, is this the amount that Hopkinton provided to us for use in the CIP planning? For how much goes in the funds?
I think so, but I, I would have to look that up to be sure.
That would be good to know.
I know the hundred and eighty thousand dollar number, but.
Yeah. Well, I think, yeah, the hundred eighty, and this of course is twenty-five percent of that.
Temporary construction use.
I wonder when they're gonna start doing that, um, solar thing? They're still working on that solar down by the dump? So.
They're trying.
Yeah, I'm sure they are, days like, you know, more.
Take a lot of time.
It, it's still where it is, where they're trying to finalize, finalize their interconnection agreement.
Oh, okay. So it hasn't been forgotten about.
Starting a solar project in Kingston.
That oughta help us a lot.
Basically everywhere is, because it's a great time to do it.
With your help.
So, uh, because the school payment is on here, is this our normal amount or is this the reduced amount?
That's the reduced amount.
How long do we pay the reduced amount?
Um, I believe we're paying it through June.
Are we getting interest on what we overpaid them?
No.
Then I'd like. Then I'd like to see all of it applied on the next bill, instead of overtime across the June bill.
You wanna pay the whole bill?
No, I want them to put the entire credit on the next bill. So we're done, because otherwise we're losing money.
Because we're not gaining interest.
Because we're not gaining interest on hundreds of thousands of dollars, they are.
I, I still don't understand what you're telling me. Um, you, you are saying that we wouldn't pay school bills?
So the next, so we're paying in this case two hundred thirty-two thousand five hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Right.
That is a reduced amount of however much until the, you said June or the six-month?
I believe that they change in June, yeah, yeah.
But that is only because they overcharged us and have more of our money than they should already.
Right, because normally we'd be paying over three hundred thousand.
Correct, yeah. So if we extrapolate that out, this is the, is this the March or the February? Oh, this is, yeah, February. So we'll have March, April, May, June. So four payments that are, let's say it's about three hundred, uh, so that would be about seventy thousand difference on each one. That's about two hundred and eighty thousand, that's almost but not quite one payment.
So if I ask them that, I would have, they may not go with me. So I'd have to somehow set up a meeting between you and them.
Well, we should ask them for that and have it all taken care of on the next bill. We would still be paying them, we just wouldn't be.
I know, but I'm just saying if they, if they don't, that.
Pay them all at one time.
Because otherwise, we should be asking them for interest on the amount that they're holding.
Mm-hmm, I did ask them that, and that didn't go, so.
So, yeah, they should just provide it to us.
Okay.
Because otherwise it is cheating our townspeople out of interest that we would be giving our, in our.
I understand.
Good catch, Dave.
V H B. All right. Oh, there's one.
Oh, and then I have Russ gave me timber things, which I don't know much about.
Oops, upside down. Thank you, Brian, upside down. We have to sign these.
There's several places to sign, I usually depend on Marlowe to tell me what to do.
Are these finalizations or just in tents?
No, those are reports.
Those are reports.
They're taxed, the tax side of it.
Yay, we get money now.
Yes, we get money. No, signing here always, well.
That's always the good side.
Did you want me to hold this check for Hopkinton or from, who is this, Atlantic Recycling?
Uh, no, I just wanna know for sure that that's the amount that we were expecting in the CIP.
Okay.
So that if it's not, and it's more than we were expecting in the CIP, that, uh, because then we would probably want to modify numbers on town meeting for.
Okay, I will.
To make sure we still have what we need. And then of course, if it's not, ask them why it's more. It's probably all correct, but.
There's a knuckle in there.
Looks like it's just the two. Oh. Steel and paper clay. And it holds it together. Are there other signage's?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, you have them all.
Hold on, yeah. I don't know if these are all supposed to be stuck together, I guess they are.
I think he's trying to show you the worksheet, and then there's the warrant, and then there's.
Okay.
The deal, I guess.
It is, I'll leave it there. Oops.
Let's see. Look at that, looks like it's one.
It's the same, right?
It's probably the same copy of it. Yes. This looks like two, okay, this is two copies, but like one worksheet on the table.
Doesn't say it on the tree, does it, Dave?
No.
That's why they have to cut some in.
Yeah, right.
Now that we have any trees left.
To make paper. That's why we recycle paper.
That's right.
Which reminds me, how are we handling paper recycling here? I know at one point in time, if somebody was taking it over to our transfer station. But I don't, but I don't believe they're here and, and working anymore, so what is that?
We put it in the shredder and the shredding company, when they shred, they take it.
Okay, so the shredding covenirs is what you're doing, recycling?
Yeah, there's a couple pages.
That's everything. I did, okay, so that's done.
Oh, hold on.
All right. And is there anything further anyone would like to discuss?
There'll be a march, great find coming out.
Yes, you should have announced it.
I know I should have, I wasn't thinking.
Hooray for another great find.
If anybody would like to take over, I'd be glad to help them.
There you go. If you feel your collar is loose. Talk to the sleeve.
Right. And hurry up.
My big, so, yeah, right, my big subjects in school was math and science, so I wrote for a living for thirty-nine years, so that makes, well, even longer than that, because I wrote for the Monitor for eleven. So you never know which way the wind blows.
Well, I never thought I'd work for town.
That's, that's, exactly.
So we have, it is now seven fifty-two. Do you wanna wait and just look at the warrant stuff for next time? Or do you wanna quickly go through them since we know what they are and decide who wants to do what?
I think I don't have the warrant thing here.
Yeah, well, just, we'll do it next time.
Sounds good. Uh, so I believe that covers everything on the agenda?
Mm-hmm. I would like to have a non-public session. Ninety-one A. Ninety-one A, two, three, section two.
And which one is that?
Uh, personnel.
Personnel.
All right.
The time is now seven fifty-two. I would move that we enter into non-public session for personnel discussion.
I second that, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As per usual, we will not, uh, continue the stream, and we will immediately adjourn following the non-public session.